That sounds loud as all get out. Okay, welcome to our August fourth, two thousand and twenty five council meeting. Welcome everybody. And as our, as we do at every meeting, we have an invocation and tonight we're honored to have Pastor Hunter Strength with the Beacon Baptist Church leading our invocation. Good evening, sir.
For whatever we destroy today, in the most rain provided us with after the heat last week. You are a gracious God, who as you have told us in your word makes the rain on both the just and the unto. Furthermore, in your word, you have taught us that in your sovereign wisdom, you have given us leaders over us to steward the nation that you have established over the earth. I pray that in the proceedings that are set to take place tonight, that the men and women of the council will be overwhelmed with a sense of awe at the responsibility that they have to serve and to steward in this capacity in accordance to your divine problems. May you grant them grace to fulfill this role in a way that lovingly serves their natives through the order, budgets, the laws that they have to discuss even this evening for your glory. Each of us live with an understanding that you have set us where we are in the roles that we are in and the day that we live for a purpose. May we see our lives through the lens of eternal significance. In Christ's name I pray.
Thank you, sir. It was an honor to read this proclamation tonight. It's, I'll come up front. And I am joined by Lindsay Chin, and she is the Parks and Rec, thank you, Parks and Rec member who is in charge of our downtown Farmer's Market. Being an old farm boy, I know how hard it is. Thank you. That's for you, by the way. It, being an old farm boy, I know about the corn and beans and that kind of stuff. And I know that's, I know that's hard, but this is probably the one program that's one of the most popular things we have in Meban. And people look forward to for opening and they're very disappointed when it closes. So I'm proud to read this proclamation. Office of Mayor proclamation, Meban Farmers Market Week, August third through the ninth, two thousand and twenty five. Whereas the city of Meban is extremely proud of our downtown Meban market, Farmer's Market now seventeen years old. And whereas farmer markets, farmers markets promote healthy communities by increased access to nutritious locally grown foods, encouraging healthy eating habits and serving as a vibrant community gathering places. And whereas farmer market plays a key role in strengthening our food system and fostering sustainability, resilience and food security in our region. And whereas farmers markets contribute to the local economy by supporting agriculture entrepreneurs and small businesses, while helping to preserve farmland and rural livelihoods. And whereas farmers markets offer ways for new farmers to enter the marketplace and connect farmers directly to consumers. And whereas the economic impact of farmers markets not only includes direct benefits to farmers and affiliated businesses, but also benefits to the community by stimulating downtown revitalization and enhancing community engagement. And whereas the Meban City Council recognized the importance of expanding agricultural marketing opportunities that exist and encourage the next generation of farmers and ranchers generate farm income to help stimulate businesses and business development and job creation and build community connections. And whereas farmers markets offer a vibrant and inclusive space for education and engagement where individuals can learn about food production, nutrition and community. Now therefore, to further awareness of farmers markets contribution to Meban, I Ed Hooks, Mayor of Meban, do hereby proclaim the week of August third through the eighth as National Farmers Market Week in Meban, in conjunction with the observance of National Farmers Market Week. I call upon our citizens to celebrate the important contributions of farmers markets and the hardworking farmers, which I know very well, vendors, organizers and volunteers who make them possible with appropriate observance and activities. In witness thereof, I hereby set my hand this fourth day of August, Ed Hooks, Mayor.
Bye, Ed.
Thank you. All right, let's go to public comments. And the first person that is on is Rita Gross. It's council voted sometime ago, three minutes, name and your address, please.
Good evening. My name is Rita Gross. I live at fourteen nineteen Sundown Drive in Meban in Orange County. Has had a few words I wanted to say.
Can I interrupt you for a minute? This will be, this is about the subdivision tonight. I should have, that's, it's probably going to be continued. So if, if you want to go ahead and do that, that'd be fine. Okay.
I'd like to. Yes, thank you. I am concerned about placing eighty townhomes on only sixteen acres of land as I believe that that is too dense a population for the property. In my neighborhood, Sunset Ridge, we all have approximately one acre lots. We are not crowded on top of each other. And while I can't speak for anyone but myself, I dare say we prefer it that way. Additionally, I'm concerned about the water table for my home and for my neighbors as we all have individual wells. The last thing any of us want is to have our water access disrupted. I'm also very concerned about the traffic. Despite being on a straight stretch of road, I have seen the aftermath of several, several accidents near my home as well as on my property. I've even witnessed someone drive past to stop school bus risking children's lives. We do not need another over concentrated neighborhood that Meban is not prepared for. Thank you.
Thank you. The next one is John Frank.
Good evening. My name is John Frank. I live at one five one nine Do Run Road in Meban in Orange County. I live, we actually own and operate Wendy Bottoms Farm, which is immediately on the other side of Lebanon Road. And we too also have some concerns about this particular development. First, I want to talk about Mr. Colin Canal. I think they did a really good job summarizing his concerns with the long-term planning as well as kind of caught the spirit of who we are out there and what we're looking to have. So I would wholeheartedly endorse his comments before he voted no on this or not to endorse it. First of all, it's inconsistent with the area, high density housing in an area that a lot of places are rural, actually a zone rural, kind of seems out of place. I think that growth is going to happen, but there are other places in Meban where there's high density housing is being built. And it seems that's possible and very advantageous to maintain not just the development that has to happen through this natural course and also maintains. It's difficult for me to see the benefits for the people in the area here compared to some of the other projects. Some of the downtown development definitely has tangible benefits for more people, more money. I think for those of us that live in around the project, it's difficult for us to see outside of the city to expand its tax base and the developer and the landowner, how we're going to benefit from that more traffic, more potential dangerous things happening, more stress in our schools and more difficult for us to just kind of live the lives that we chose to live when we moved there. Safety concerns were mentioned earlier. Mr. Canal mentioned a lot of infrastructure issues. Maybe this is not the right project, right time for this particular spot. Floodwater management, something kind of we all got to experience here recently. We saw a lot of water coming through. This was brought up at the planning meeting and the developer really didn't have an answer for that. So I would really like to have that answered more. How is putting eighty seven or eighty different townhomes there, a lot more impermeable area? How is that going to affect our water coming through there? I think finally, something kind of near and dear to my heart is we don't live within the city limits. We don't get an opportunity to devote for leadership. Who gets to make these weighty decisions? Yet you have the ability to come in and make a pretty profound change to our way of life. And so I would just very humbly ask that you listen to those of us that are living there. How we feel about this and maybe we can plan and some development that makes sense for everybody in the area, not just handful. Thank you all.
Good. Thank you, sir. All right, the next is Peggy. I won't say, I can't read the guy here.
Hey, Guyer fifty five fourteen Fieldview Road, Meban. And I wanted to come here tonight to thank the city of Meban for the Senior Connect program and to share how it has impacted my life personally. When I retired, I began volunteering at John Crenadle Senior Center in Burlington, which eventually led to my employment there for eleven years. I was involved in numerous activities, some that I organized myself. From my connections there, I became co-director of the Miss Senior Alamance County Pageant, which led me to start a senior spreading sunshine program. My senior spreading sunshine group consisted of sixteen seniors from around North Carolina whose mission was to perform at nursing homes, assisted living churches, et cetera, in the hope of encouraging seniors to become more active and involved. However, since I was aging, around three years ago, my daughter and I decided I should move to Meban with her. I couldn't find anywhere in Meban that offers senior activities, so I continued to travel to Burlington daily. Not long after that, not long after I moved here, I developed some medical issues that forced me to limit my driving. Therefore, I felt I should give up all these activities that have been the center of my life for so long. I still didn't know how to replace them in Meban. My daughter's very accommodating and we do a lot of things together. However, I wanted to be sure she had quality time with her spouse and time for herself. I also needed the interaction with my own peers. Deep down, I think this is a feeling that lots of seniors share. Suddenly, you don't have a job anymore. Your children are out of the house and grown up, have their own lives. Maybe your spouse has, is deceased. Maybe your family all live out of town. And living by, living alone like this and feeling like this can lead to a lot of medical and mental problems. I also needed, I'm sorry, deep down, I began to feel that I was merely existing with no real purpose in life. I think this is a feeling that most seniors share. So you can see that I was very elated to find out that we had a senior connect in Meban. Not only for me, it's a need, it's much needed program, not only for me, but for a lot of other seniors. For me personally, I now have numerous senior friends in Meban. It's given my life a new purpose since the staff has allowed me to be involved in promoting the activities, brainstorming on new activities and senior outreach. On July thirtieth, you have a program up there. I organized the Miss Senior Merrick Performance to draw seniors to the Mac and to hopefully inspire them to become more active. We range in age from sixty to eighty-five and shared many varied talents. We wanted to show people that age is just, is just a number. The participants came from across, all across North Carolina and one from South Carolina to perform. We had twenty-six performers and around a hundred plus in attendance. I want to point out on your program there on the back, you'll see that many of the downtown merchants are in support of the Senior Connect. The other document is the summary of the activities and events offered by Senior Connect since February. I will add that there was a Tai Chi class, which was very well attended. Coming up in addition to the workshops and seminars on your document, we're working on a quarterly meet and greet social for seniors, a second chance prom, classes on crochet, and we're still blooded up, brainstorming. I hope you will review this document and see all the progress we've made. I'm pleased to say that we are progressing at a very rapid rate. Thank you again for all your support.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. The next is Shane Roser. Hey, Mr. Sir.
My name is Shane Roser. I'm a United States combat veteran. I'm a resident of Meban. I live at twelve forty-one South Fifth Street in the Fox Round Apartments condominiums over there. And I'm here because about three or four months ago, a gentleman that lives there decided upon himself to get three kittens to so his child would have three cats to play with. He has since abandoned those animals and they've become fifteen now. Where I used to live in a city called Fount, Colorado. Um, where, I used to live in a city called Fount, Colorado. They started off with three cats like this and they now have about three thousand cats. They're known as the city of cats. Uh, I urge you not to be known as meowbin and do something about this. Um. It's, it's serious. I don't think it's funny. Uh, I, I would like to have participated in the crops, but the cats have come in and destroyed my entire garden. Uh, my wife's allergic to them. Um, it's a health risk. Um, that I've already spoken with the, the. The people here, the shit, the police department and the officer, they won't trap the animals. There's no city ordinance. I'm simply here tonight to introduce myself to you, let you know I'm gonna be contacting you individually. I expect somebody in this council to step up and make a city ordinance to put a stop to this. Uh, over a hundred and fifty cities in the state of North Carolina have ordinance to, that put a stop to this. Um, the lady down at the. Alamance County, the Burlington Shelter is in violation of state law. I'm working with the district attorney and state prosecutors to get something done about that. Um, but we need something done. This is gonna get out of hand. Um, just a couple of quick things here. The, uh, cat gestational period is nine weeks. They can become fertile after six months. Uh, the state law concerning the shelter and the laws of that is nineteen A. Uh, sixty-eight, there's fifty thousand dollars allocated for that. It's being mis, misappropriated with that, uh, program over there. Uh, fourteen dash three sixty defines what a feral cat is. Uh, in the state of North Carolina, you must be a licensed colony caretaker, which nobody currently is in the city of Meven to feed these animals. It's also against the law for a business to feed these animals. Uh, thirteen, uh, one thirty A, one eight four through one nine five talks about unsocialized. And if one of these animals becomes rabid, they all gotta go. You're gonna have to kill them all. So you're, you're gonna have to do something about this because what you're doing is you're creating a food supply for the coy wolves that let on, live on the outer edges of the city. And once those coy wolves start coming into this community, they will start killing people. And it will become a very big health risk and a big problem. And I'm, once again, I'm just introducing myself. I'm gonna give some facts and some more information. I've spoken with. Uh, Mayor Hooks and I've spoken with your chief of police and I've spoken with the, uh, officer that refused to do anything. So I'll be back in touch. If you have any questions, he has my phone number.
Mr. Roser, we, I normally don't, we don't normally speak, uh, after somebody talks, uh, public comments, but. I have introduced the idea to our, uh, to Lawson Brown, our attorney. And, um, he, he assures me that he's working to see if there is a legal, legal, what we can do legally. Okay? So that's in motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Does Burlington Animal Services offer anything to help out?
No, she, she refuses. She, she refuses to allow me to even have a trap. Cause she knows I'm, I, that, she has an illegal program established called Mighty Mousers. And what they do is they fix the animals and then return them to the location.
Right.
Well, that's not gonna help anything because we don't have anybody that's taking care of these animals and making sure that when new cats show up. And all it took was when we got the three kittens to start this off in the stack.
All right, the, the last one is Deb Cal.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, City Manager, Mr. Lawson Brown. Oh, I'm here tonight to.
If you're not in the.
Doug Carroll, Holly Ridge Lane. Oh. I got four concerns that probably can be fixed pretty minor if, if it's, if they're addressed. In Holly Ridge, you know, it's only one way in and one way out. And you know, when you start in, you kind of got that S in there. And they seem to have a pretty heavy foot in the S and then once they get into straight stress. Then they turn it out. So, and there's no speed limit signs there at all. He, there's one up at the front says drive slowly children. At play or whatever, but there's nothing in it. I don't see anything we can do to. Slows on this track down. I've called it UPS about the UPS truck. I've called FedEx by the FedEx truck. Some of the city trucks have, haven't done it lately, but they had a heavy foot on the gravel truck. Sir, but that's, that's the concern there. Second thing is. Uh, on these big areas, and I think y'all are starting to do this, like on the big intersections, like the new one out here. There needs to be not the signs on the corner, but, but it needs to be a sign for the saying. One nineteen north, one nineteen south, and then if you hit the other way, one saying. South Third Street Extension, no, and saying south Fifth Street, but down here on Meven Up Road, that's very confusing because you know, you got. Old Hills were going one way and you sort of got old hills were going the other way until it turns into Bowman Road. And it's, I think y'all can put, and I, I know you've done, you add some signs out here to new one. I saw those, and they look nice. The third thing is, who's, who's looking after fire hives in the city? Is, is it? Is Bud Wars looking to ask him? Is Fire Department looking at? In, in Arthur Creek and in Collin Farms. They look like they've been painted because when I go through on the school bus, all those are painted, but the rest of them in town look worse than they did when. I started in nineteen eighty-six, when we started trying to find them from the wood, from the weeds and all. But it's just, you know, for us to be positive, the charm, and I think we can give the fires a little coat of paint. And the last thing is, since White has been renovated. Every time I come into town, the first thing I look at is the saddle on top of the building. You know, if there's any way that that top could be taken off, because it's got those two pipes hanging down. And maybe have that thing painted, maybe they can get that thing painted black and then to put like the laws. At white furniture only, just, I mean, next time you're riding on Fifth Street, just look around and see what I'm talking about. It's. But that's just four concerns that I would want to bring to you tonight that I think are pretty easy to fix. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Police Chief.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, we have one individual that got here right after the sheet was pulled up a Meven resident that has a. Very short announcement she would like to make her. I'll let her introduce herself. How's that?
Yeah, so my name's Dana Burke. I actually don't live in Meven now, but I did grow up in Meven. So I love Meven. I love Alamance County, and I mean that very sincerely, not just the place, but her people. And this county, I'm sorry, I live at thirty-one ninety-two Carriage Creek, Horton Hall River. I went to Washington DC yesterday and as I was driving up there, I got lost. Um, I didn't use my GPS. I'm old school. I try to read road signs. I used to be a drug rep and that's what we used to do. Um. And I believe in God and I believe the hand of God took me down the middle of Washington DC. And I looked at, as I was going, I'm thinking like, where? And you can't look around too much and see road signs because their lights are different. But I was looking straight at the Washington Monument at one point. And some people might say I'm crazy, but I believe that God told me, because I've been thinking about running for office, I felt like he was saying, you go girl. So I'm here tonight to tell everyone, um, because of my trip yesterday, I left from Quantico this morning. I stayed in Quantico, Virginia last night. I came. Home today. I'm letting everybody know that I am running as a Republican for Sheriff of Alamance County. I am very dismayed with the current sheriff. I don't believe he is investigating every crime like he tells everyone. Um, for twenty-five years almost, he's been in office for almost a quarter of a century and all we hear about is drugs and gangs, drugs and gangs. Well, if you're taking care of them, it looks like to me, people would be like, you're wanting to sell drugs. They'd be like, don't go to Alamance County. He's gonna take care of you there. Apparently, that's not the case. So anyway, um, I believe in my cause. Uh, also, another problem that I've got is that, um, if you really do have drugs in your community, then you have human trafficking. And I'm a mother, and if you ever learn about human trafficking, you're going to find out if you got drugs and gangs, you got human trafficking. It's happening right here. If we have this big drug problem that we're always being told, and yet I never hear anything about that. We've got to protect our children and that is going to be my platform and my stand. So, thank you. Um, again, I wanted to come here and to make my announcement because I am from Meven. Went to E M Yoda Woodall Middle School, Eastern Alamance High School. Go Eagles.
Thank you. All right, that concludes public comments. All right, moving to the consent agenda, we have the approval minutes of our June regular meeting. Final plan approval Potter's Mill. The petition for voluntary contiguous annexation Corey Meven Development. Petition for voluntary contiguous annexation Mill Creek Development Company LLC. The DMDC quarterly report, fourth quarter. Uh, FY twenty-four, twenty-five disposed asset listing report. Resolutions badge inside arm award to retiring officers, Officer David Dodson and Officer Eric Franklin. Is there any comment on any of the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consented agendas.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
I just want to say thank you, Officer Dodson, Officer Franklin, for your service. You, you both are very much appreciated. Thank you for everything.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, consent agenda passes. All right, we're moving on to public hearings. Um. The ordinance to extend the corporate limits voluntary non- contiguous annexation sixty-six Lebanon Road, Gary Michael Edwards. Uh, Mr. Brown. Maybe before we hear, uh, Mr. Brown, I think I'd need to recognize, uh, Nathan Duggins.
Mr. Mayor, Nathan Duggins, on behalf of the applicant, uh, my address is four hundred Elamance Street in Greensboro. Uh, we're on, I'm here on behalf of, uh, Dwight Stone, who's the developer of this, uh, this site. Uh, requesting that we continue this matter and if, if I can just speak briefly to why. We're asking for a continuation. We talked to staff about this. A little bit unusual, uh, from a time perspective, we have a planning board meeting. Um, seven days ago, uh, and there were a number of folks who came to the planning board meeting, neighbors. Uh, who we hadn't had an opportunity to speak with, uh, so we'd like that opportunity to talk with them. Uh, number two, there were some neighbors who expressed some concerns about some traffic. Uh, and, uh, we'd like an opportunity to work on some of those concerns. Uh, so, uh, to that, we, we'd ask that this be continued, uh, to the September, uh, city council.
All right, we have a request to, to continue. This is both A and B. Can we do that?
I would prefer that you have two separate motions.
All right, the first one's A is ordinance to extend the corporate limits. Do you have a motion?
Motion to continue ordinance to extend the corporate limits voluntary non- contiguous annexation sixty-six hundred Lebanon Road.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries to continue, uh, the conditional rezoning.
I have a motion to, uh, continue the conditional rezoning, I think, to September, uh, meeting at Wood.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Both will be continued to our September meeting. Thank you, Mr. Duggins. Lawson, you have any comment? Okay, thank you. I did, uh, apologize for interrupting you.
I know.
All right, the public hearing C, conditional rezoning. Uh, West Holt Street from B one CD to B one CD. Uh, central business conditional district for a planned unit development of eighty-seven townhomes. And seventy-eight hundred square feet of commercial space. Uh, Ms. Ombi.
Good evening. Real quick, Mayor Hooks. Uh, because of my personal pecuniary interest as a potential real estate broker, if this, uh. Proposal is passed, I'd like to request, uh, that council allow me to recuse myself from this application and request.
You'll be earning a commission on all this if approved, Mr. Holder?
Yeah. If, if I am, if it's approved and I'm the list agent, then yes, I would earn commission.
This is few and far between. A lot of constituents have a lot of problems with this and there's a lot of, there's a lot of issues in government right now and trust. And I hope this is very, very rare moving forward.
I don't, I don't really think those comments from Jermaine to the request for recuse, I'll make a motion to recuse yourself. And having said that motion. Uh, we live in a very small city. And if you're gonna participate, work in the community, participate as a volunteer. Uh, there are gonna be times when you run into a conflict. Uh, I've served on a number of, of councils where we've had business owners downtown. Recuse themselves because of issues that would directly impact the finance business. We've had construction salesman. Uh. Construction part salesman that recused themselves when, uh, they, they stood to make, make a financial benefit, but. I've heard some comments about, uh, why can, why can an individual, uh, actually work on an issue that. Impacts the city. Well, I've been a volunteer firefighter for fifty-one years and I've had to recuse myself every year. That I've been on the council because as a volunteer assistant chief, I'm on the board. So if you're gonna participate in a community, uh, the size of Meven. Uh, in my opinion, you're gonna run across these issues because we're a small city. And even if we're, you are a large community, the likelihood still exists. So I fully respect. Uh, Katie for requesting to be recused. I think that, uh, she's handled this well. I have not had any comments. Uh, conversations from her suggesting supporting or opposing this project. So. I think the refusal is appropriate and I make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We're calling you are recused. All right, um, Ms. Ombi.
Before you, is there a request to rezone approximately five point seven acres in downtown Meven? Uh, the site is currently zoned B one conditional district. This zoning exists because of an approval, um, in October of twenty twenty-two for a site-specific plan that included two hundred and seventeen apartments. Approximately ninety-four hundred square feet of commercial space and forty-two hundred square feet of community event space. This is a new proposal before you tonight. It is the same zoning district on paper, B one conditional district. But there is a different site-specific plan and different conditions associated with the zoning district. On the zoning map, you'll see the surrounding zoning is mixed. The blue is office and institutional. The pinkish red is central business district, which is across the railroad and also to the east of the site. There is some heavy manufacturing zoning showing in purple and then the yellow that you see on the map is residential zoning. The site is within our city limits in Alamance County. It's in downtown Meven. Um, city utilities are available to serve the site. Currently, it's vacant. Historically, it's been used for manufacturing purposes, often referred to as the Kingsdown site. As I mentioned, it is entitled to an approval from October of twenty twenty-two. Um, after city council approval plans did go through, our technical review committee, construction plans were stamped approved. And demolition began on the site. And so as it currently exists today, if you drive by, it does appear to still be a site under construction. Surrounding uses include single-family to the south and west. And then you have the Meven Public Library to the west, our central downtown, um, across the railroad and then. Station one of the Meven Fire Department is to the east. To give you an idea of what the site is entitled to, this is the conceptual plan that was included in your presentation in October of twenty twenty-two. Uh, which shows. Four, or sorry, five apartment buildings, um, and then one building being preserved for clubhouse and private amenities. The site is located within a downtown mixed-use growth strategy area as identified in Meven by design or comprehensively and development plan. The site is also included within our downtown boundary of the downtown vision plan, um, and is mentioned within it. For the proposal that is associated with the conditional district, you have the site-specific plan, which shows a planned unit development of eighty-seven townhomes. And approximately seven, eight hundred square feet of commercial space. There is, um, just under half acre of private recreation and open space provided. Um, on the eastern boundary of the site with an open shelter. And five-foot sidewalks are proposed along all frontages, including a high-visibility crosswalk of South Third Street. No new traffic impact analysis was required for this development. Uh, this proposal is less intense than the previous proposal. A traffic analysis was completed for that previous appro, proposal. Um, and no recommendations for off-site transportation improvements were required then. There are some multimodal recommendations as a result of the traffic impact analysis and also. There are some multimodal recommendations as a result of the traffic impact analysis and also the city's adopted long-range plans, including a bike boulevard, which implies the shared lane markings and signage on South Second Street and West Washington Street, and then the pedestrian improvements that they are including on their site specific plan, particularly that high visibility crossing. In addition to the site specific plan, other conditions include a payment in lieu of public recreation area. Which is allowed by our ordinance per approval by council. And then also relief from some of the non-residential parking requirements associated with use of a leased parking lot across the site. That is owned by United Methodist Church of Meven and was part of the approval for the October twenty twenty two plan. There's also an alternative landscaping plan included by our ordinance. There is some condition within there that for B one central business district, there's a need to make some conditions when it comes to landscaping due to the type of density that we allow in our downtown districts. Unless there are immediate questions from me, I'll turn it over to the applicant.
Mr. Mayor, City Council members, again Nathan Duggins, four hundred Bellemet Street, Suite eight hundred in Greensboro. I'm going to introduce a few people to you tonight who are sitting here. Mr. David Allen is going to come up and walk through a presentation. I want to make these people available to, to the council, of course, for questions. We've got a traffic engineer here tonight. We've got an architect here tonight. We've got an engineer here tonight. We've got the applicant as well. So let me introduce a couple of people to you. Y'all know David Allen. David, raise your hand so they know who you are. David's with Realty Link. Brett Rogers showed up tonight. He's also with Realty Link and is here representing them. John Plagman, Plagman is here. He's in, you're from Elon, right? Burlington Elon, and he's an architect and can speak on, on the project. And then Alan Hill is here, who's an engineer, has worked on, on the project. Ashley lined out what's, what's before you pretty well this evening. This is a reduction in units. We were going from two hundred and seventeen apartments to eighty seven townhomes. You can see that on the site plan. Height is coming down in the prior site plan that was approved. There were some four-story units. Now everything is three-story. We'll have David speak to that a little bit. You heard Ashley talk about public rec. There's about a hundred and forty four thousand dollar public rec. Payment in lieu that is being requested to be approved tonight as well. We think this is a great fit. David's really excited about this for downtown Meven. And so I'm going to ask him to come up and Ashley, I think you've got his presentation. Yep, great. Okay. Any questions of me before I have David come up here? Great. David.
Good evening. My name is David Allen, twenty seven fifteen Anderson Drive in Raleigh, North Carolina. I want to talk tonight about the District on Washington, and let me first say that if I'd have listened to you three years ago, we'd have had townhomes up by then. But we're glad we're moving forward with you all now, we hope. And here's our presentation to guess. Why the changes from multifamily to townhomes. Over the years, cost of construction increased thirty five percent or more. Growing interest rates made. Deals like this, we have to raise equity and that type of thing. It made it impossible. Financing was there, but equity did not participate. We've thought about it and then actually our, our founder came to me one day and said, what do you think about townhomes here? And I said, I think we can do it. So we started working on a plan. And literally took an entire apartment project and threw it in the garbage can. But that's okay. So the need for more open space in the community was also a part of this project. Behind the changes. There was a reduction in retail. Part of that was in downtown Meven and building and constructing a new facility. In order to make it viable as an ownership, rents would probably be closer to the mid to upper forties in rent, just because of the cost of construction. That was one of our biggest concerns. The other was, we felt like creating open space would be a benefit to the town. Yes, you've got lovely parks, but we wanted a community that's not closed off like an apartment project. This is an open design. It is open to be part of the community. To, to feed from downtown over to Holt Street back to the pickleball courts and the, and the, and the the spaces behind that allow for recreation. We also have a restaurant pad that is designed for us to bring, we're trying to bring a national restaurant here. People want to be here. I think Meven's ready for that. You're getting a Target. You're getting a Buc-E's. You're getting a lot of really new things coming to the market and, you know, we would love to, to try to bring that. However, if not, we're prepared to also build a building there as well. The cotton building. It came up and I'm just gonna, you know, sometimes I feel like dressing things, I just address them head on. I've heard a lot of people don't appreciate it, but I'm going to tell you where we've been with it and how we're getting where we are. Yeah. We did try to save the cotton building when we were building apartments. That's a fact. We spent a lot of money and time trying to figure out how to save it. It's another fact. We had an engineer walk through the cotton building when we were demolishing the Kingsdown factory. And he said it was possible, but not guaranteed that we could save it. When we went through our steps a little further. We connected with the city and we even let them know we couldn't save the building. We would try to save the north and east walls. In doing that, we essentially have to tear the entire structure down and try to save two walls. With that, all of those are facts. The additional facts are trying to save just two walls comes as a significant amount of danger. One is the building at this age, your concerns about collapse. It falling in, there's no true foundation. It's just it's sitting on basically ground. And so the stability of it, you would have to dig out around it to try to get footers in the ground, which also are very dangerous to do. We would actually have to build a skeleton in, around that building just to get something to stabilize it. And at a certain point, to be very honest, that structure as we feel is not something we can save. Now, what can we do? I happened to be in planning commission last week and a young, a, a nice lady came, said to me, she goes, you need to use it. Use something from it. Make it a part of the project. So my plan is not in stone, but I would like to use some of the bricks to build the the name District on Washington, to build the signage, to put sidewalks in the front, to the, out to the gazebo on the playground. And to utilize a portion of it where we can. That was my comment on the cotton building and we can talk further because I have an architect here that can talk further to that. So the future building design and elevation is a three-story residential townhome. Facing Washington, Second and Third Streets. Eighty seven units with three bedrooms each. On-site parking with four cars per unit. Each unit will have a two-car parking garage and a parking pad behind it for, so you can have four cars. What we felt like was in the design was trying to, to come up and understand the downtown and the, the colors and the flair. The white we got from the veterans memorial. The, the red that you see, that burnt Auburn red that you see. Someone took us by and showed me the first fire truck in Meven. And we tried to kind of make a hint to that as well. And the brick, the brick column wrapping had to, you know, in riding around town, you have a lot of brick, which also have a lot of of, of wooden structures as well. And so we tried to, to, to to stay within the, the timeframe of, of the, of the area. As I mentioned in the, before, the deep reds, whites, muted grays. Add a hint of tradition and color. Warmth of stained wooden doors. With overhead side lights and, and those are the things we're trying to bring into the neighborhood. Classic pitch roof with clean lines and coordinate colors of the building. Now, we talked a little bit about height. This is the same slide I used in twenty two, but our height's forty three feet, two inches. One foot taller than the top of the parapet. I can't remember what they call that building on the rise of the, not the, is it the Coca-Cola building? Which building is that on the right? And the church on the left, the steeple is fifty nine feet. The three bedrooms, first floor is on your left. And you see the two-car garage, you come in. And yes, each unit will have an elevator shaft. We are anticipating putting the elevators in most all of them. The cost of an elevator is not that expensive these days, especially when we've already put the shaft in. But it will be a, a great help for, you know, my in-laws had to have an elevator and they say it's great for taking their laundry up and their groceries or whatever. But granite quartz countertops. LTV flooring with upgrades to hardwood. It can be available, nine-foot ceilings throughout. The second floor is going to be kind of the living space. So you have on the first floor, you have a one bedroom down there, or it could be an office, whatever you want it, or a playroom, whatever you want it to be. The second floor is a living space with a kitchen and living space behind it with an outdoor patio for everyone. And the third floor is, is my favorite. They're both master en suites. They're master bedrooms upstairs with en suite bathrooms, walk-in closets. And bu, and both upstairs. So we wanted to be attractive. We feel like the customer and, and the buyer is a young couple moving to Meven. Retirees coming to Meven. People just looking to lock the door and go to the beach or the mountains. So that was the design. There's two types. One's two thousand and three square feet. And the other is twenty one hundred square feet. And the only difference really is we flipped the kitchen from one side to the other. But they're, they're, they're basically the same. The investment we're making is forty two and a half million dollars in downtown Meven. Property tax currently on that particular building and where it sits is about thirty thousand dollars. And just doing the math on what we think in the valuations would be, that would increase to almost four hundred thousand dollars a year. And tax dollars back to the city. An outdoor amenity space for the residents and the entire community. New residents living and shopping and dining in the heart of downtown Meven. And potential new entrepreneurs moving and building their lives in Meven. This is your community and your lifestyle. The design package that we've come up with, this is one of three. But this is what we call the traditional or the dogwood. Soft closed doors and cabinets, classic traditional type of styles, clean lines. GE appliances with upgrades. So the base is like a GE, regular GE with monogram and cafe upgrades. Early entry will allow for individuals to have their own upgrade appointments that they want. Lauren Tilly Design is doing our work out of Greensboro. And people could come in and say, I'm just going to buy a shell and they can let their designer do it themselves as well. We want to be flexible and we want to provide the individuality that, that everyone wants in a home. The feedback that I got from neighbors was, we had about twenty when we met at the Methodist Church. It didn't have, it says it has a nod to Meven and fits much better than the apartment site. One said, why do you have two entrances on Holt Street? Well, the old design had two hundred and eighteen apartments. And that particular project, this particular project has eighty seven townhomes. We are about forty one percent of the traffic volume that was in the old TIA. Will there be any variances required for this project? No, we don't have any variances, just conditions. And here. I feel like this is a much better plan than apartments. We appreciate the project is inclusive to the entire community, community. And like that the park will be available to all members of the community. So if you look at this design. Couple of things we had to take into account with the city. One is trash and fire. We want a trash trucks to be able to get in and out down. One of the things that we've agreed to is that there'll be no on-street parking on, inside the project. It'll all be, you have to be in it, but we do have our lease with the Methodist Church that we have continued. And will be great for both the retail, but if people have people in town and it's more than, it's great for overflow parking. This is the design in the aerial. As you can see, there's two access points on Holt Street between second and third and one between third and fourth. Straight through. And we had to go with this design mainly because of the safety issue and fire safety, like things that we had to, to make sure that we could get access to. This is the look and feel of your neighborhood. This is what we're, we're trying to bring. We want neighbors meeting neighbors, having gatherings, getting together on the sidewalks, in the streets, in the community. The guy, when he did the rendering, sitting behind me here, had it done. That's really the, that's the restaurant pad, but the park will be over there too. As you can see, the doors pop with that wood feel. Skylights above, very traditional. And that's, that's it.
Can you clarify a few things on those renderings between the retail space and the restaurant pad?
Yeah, hold on. There, okay. The top on Washington here. Those two green spaces are pads. Or those are the, the, the retail building that we're going to build is the one on the right. On the, what we call the east block. And the west block is the restaurant pad.
Okay, so that green space that you show there will not be green space. That's going to be retail.
That's retail space, but the park is to the south that we were talking about.
Okay. And what is a restaurant pad?
A restaurant pad is designed so that it'll be graded and cleared and grubbed and ready for, to accept footings for a restaurant that comes in. For example, a Starbucks. If you got a Starbucks or you got another restaurateur that wanted to be there. The other option we have is to build a three thousand square foot building there for lease as well. And we're up, we're prepared to do the for lease as well. And we're up, we're prepared to do the forty eight hundred and we're prepared to build the other as well. For the whole project? We're gonna do phase one, two, and three. The restaurants would be built, the restaurant pads would be built. The one on the right would be built, would be put together um, after during completion of the first phase. And in the second phase, that building would go up as well as building the second phase of apartments. We have programmed for timing and for for sale. For about three months apart from phases, three to five months apart. Um, and then completion. So it's really. I don't know, we're from the date we start, we're gonna do all the site work originally upfront. All the site work and all the vertical, the horizontal will be delivered upfront. And then go in and build the first twenty nine units. Twenty nine units, the next twenty nine units, and then the last twenty nine units.
Are you offering or willing to offer a condition that say once forty, forty-five, forty-nine percent of the townhomes are built, that you'll build the restaurant and commercial building?
I have no problem doing that. I I'm not, I have no problem doing that. Sometime in the second phase, be happy, that's fine.
So you would offer that as a condition voluntarily that before permits could be issued for the
Absolutely.
Forty ninth, fiftieth, and on up, uh, townhome, you would build the commercial space for rent and the restaurant.
There comes a, there's a point in the building. When you're on this side, once that side's built out, it's a little easier to get into the ground. You also gotta be careful, you don't want to build and open a restaurant or 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 retail space with construction going on right next to it. So it it's a give and take, but yes.
Well, what I'm, what I'm, what I'm suggesting avoiding is we finish this development and we have a restaurant pad and a commercial pad for until someone comes along. So you're you're willing to offer that as a condition that but at before the forty ninth or forty eighth or whatever the half is, townhome, you would, you would build a restaurant space and the retail space.
We would need to do, we mean, we'd have to start, so yeah. Okay.
So the retail, the commercial space that you have listed in the packet, does that include both the retail and the restaurant pad? Or are we changing those numbers now that we're talking?
It's seventy three hundred, it's it's, I'm sorry, forty eight hundred and three thousand square feet, so it's it's seventy eight hundred.
Seventy eight is both of those.
Yes.
We're not talking pads anymore, we're talking buildings.
I'm gonna try to get a, first thing I'm gonna be doing is getting a retail pad or a tenant. And if we don't get that, we are going to build a three thousand foot building there.
One of the, uh, one of the issues, of course, is is the Cotton Exchange Building. And, you know, I think one of the things is drawing a lot of confusion and questions, particularly for me, is how did we go from the first offering and the first approval that we're gonna fix that building and use it as a community space to now uh, two years later. It's not, it's not a salvageable, salvageable building. You said that the, the engineer made the comment uh, in the initial review that is there's a potential to save it, but when it was presented here, it wasn't mentioned that there was a potential, it was gonna be used, it was gonna be salvaged and which made the, made the whole project a lot more powerful to some of us. But can you, can you explain exactly what's changed?
Can I let my architect do that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is John Plagman, architect, I have an office in Burlington and Swansboro. And I'm the architect on the original apartment project and on this one. Um, it's always been my client's intent to save the cotton building and use it as an entity for the apartment complex. We started a holistic design of just saying, let's save everything, leave the upstairs as it is with the wood timbers and beams. Uh, and quickly realized as we were getting into the building and its structure that there's a lot of disrepair and a lot of things that need to be brought up to code on this building. It's a change of use. And so by doing that, uh, we have to bring the structure up to safety concerns of modern building codes. Um, so I got Chris Berg from NV5, who's a structural engineer, to come in the, to the building and do a pretty comprehensive analysis of what is good, what is bad, what can we do, what can't we do? Based on changing it from a, the Cotton Exchange Building to the having members of the community on the second floor holding of a grand function, uh, which has a much higher load to the floors and the structure. Um, this building was built in three pieces, three phases during three different pieces of time. Um, and I would argue to say that the the side that faces inside the property, uh, they basically cut all of the masonry out and scissored it with two beams and a makeshift column with a very small footing. And when we discovered that, we realized that that facade can't even be saved. So that led us to a different kind of design. What can we save? We went from saving the whole building to what can we save on this structure? Uh, and use it as an amenity for the apartment complex. The only real viable structure on the whole building is the walls that face Third and Washington Street. It's the only thing that's even remotely salvageable on that building. Um, so that was the approach that my clients took, save the walls. And let's see what that does. We designed a, basically a building that's holding up the facade of this building. Uh, a lot of expense, a lot of extra money to do so to save those two facades. Uh, once we got the contractor involved, uh, to talk about how to shore up the walls, how to how do we keep the public safe while this thing's being demolished? We really have to brace them from the outside and not the inside. Uh, because it's proximity to the sidewalks, that's not, that can't do that. Um, so we had to design a how do you want to say, uh, make it easy to understand, two basic beams that sandwich the walls and then are braced on the inside to foundations. That led us to exploring geotechnically inside the building. Which we found out the soils were not viable to support even the structures that we were trying to do. Um, I say that all to say that when this was an apartment complex, we were in the process of designing and engineering a cotton building amenity structure that would support the two hundred plus units that we designed. With the townhouse project, um, that amenity space, it just didn't, it just wasn't enough to save the walls. I mean, that's the the bottom line to it. Um, the the danger to the people actually working on that building and the public around that area was just too great. So we looked at other amenities, green space. We looked at what can we do for a restaurant in a, in a retail space along Washington and Third, and how do we bring the elements of the cotton building back on the site, but in a different way? And so that's the charge that my clients have given me when we go into that phase of design is taking the historic elements, some of the materials and some of the notions that the cotton building has for the community and bringing it back into the site in various places. So.
So, um, go ahead. No, I I just, so it's safe to assume then that uh, even if if the, if if we stuck with the original approved plan, that the Cotton Exchange Building was not gonna happen. We're gonna have to come back for approval for change.
Yeah, we were designing that cotton building, uh, for for permits and running into a lot of roadblocks, so.
That is.
Yeah.
So that's a correct statement that you would have had to come before council, even with the part, what was approved three years ago, because you couldn't save the cotton.
No, I wouldn't say that. I mean, we were going through pretty expense to, like I said, we would have to build a a steel building inside the facades while at the same time shoring it up. And at that point in time, we we were, we stopped the design process. For the reasons that Mr. Allen was talking about, about the economy and things.
I'm a little confused. So if let's just say this does not pass tonight, you are gonna maintain the cotton building, cause the original plan kept the cotton building and you have to keep it.
Yeah, I can answer the question of the plans that we were working on as they currently live is that. But I don't know what the plans would be if we had to move forward with apartments today, that would be.
We were at the point with cost and everything, I was gonna have to come back before your, for the council to come in and have that discussion, because that building, we could not salvage it. To the effect that it would even remotely be the cotton building, to be honest with you. Does that answer your question?
Thank you for clearly answering the question. Yes, I have other questions, but you clearly answered that one.
Go ahead, you, I'm, I'm.
Yeah, so the, if money's not a, if not money, it'd be very expensive to fix. But it could be fixed. There is an alternative is what it sounds like, but.
No, there's not an alternative in my, in my book. I, there is an alternative, but cost, cost wise. You're probably north of five million dollars just to save two walls. And to me, that's not feasible in my book to to do that.
We have grants, nothing along that line? Have those been explored?
We have talked about opportunities. It's not a historic building. So there are grants and things that potentially are there, but to that kind of cost. Assuming, I'm not sure how we do that. I appreciate that.
I'm looking at our downtown vision plan and this is identified as part of the historic core. Where we need to hold on to these buildings. I'm gonna read it verbatim. These buildings are very important to the history and character of downtown, the entire community. It should be preserved unless there is absolutely no alternative.
I'm not willing to risk, risk people's lives to save something. I'm just not willing to do it. I'm willing to work with the town on alternatives with that. But when it comes to the opportunity. If you understand construction and you understand the cost and expense and the desire, that building would not look like that. It would not. It will, even if it was saved, it would not look as it does today. It can't. It's just, if you understand, there's no foundation on those walls. So you have to go out and dig down to put footers and foundations in to try to tie it back in. But there's always subject to wall failure, um, collapse and things like that. Those are the things that keep people like me up at night. So.
It kind of sounds like maybe you didn't do as thorough enough analysis before you came to us in twenty twenty-two in terms of what would be required. Would that be an accurate statement?
Yes and no. I mean, we went, when we came to you in twenty twenty-two, we had a great ambition to save that building. We had all the ambition in the world.
Right, but not the engineering.
The engineering, no, or the money. And to be honest with you, uh, it's, look, we spend lots and lots and lots of money building projects. And I get it. I just do not know, in all honesty, how I could save that building.
And in what ways are you trying to incorporate the memory of the cotton building in your design? I think you mentioned the sign. I didn't, I didn't find that super compelling, but.
Look, it it the bricks of the building, reusing parts of the bricks of the building in our, in our some, some of the sidewalks, you know, like the sidewalk going out to the gazebo. Putting bricks in some of the, as you go every so often on walkways, you have a line of two bricks and you're utilizing utilizing bricks in that form. Uh, I'd even called Brett earlier on the way here and I was like, is it possible if we took the building down to keep those two walls four feet high as a symbol and a piece of it? I don't know the answer to that. It seemed logical to me and he's like, so you're telling me to, we're gonna have to tear the building down, but save three feet above from the ground. And I don't know, but we, we're open to commentary on that in the future. Even incorporating, like we said, into the, the retail buildings as well. It's really difficult. I get it. It's a part of the fabric of the community, but it's also safety that I'm most concerned about.
Did you consider building some kind of downtown brick warehouse looking building to represent the idea of what was there before?
I'm open to that, having that discussion with you. Yeah, on that building right there, on that same pad.
Well, I don't know how we have that discussion, because we're here and we have to vote up or down.
I understand, but if you're telling me, you know, is it a one story, is it a two story? Or the apartments, or what, what, what do we, what do you, you know? We had designed a restaurant there. I don't know why we couldn't do a brick facade on the, on the restaurant piece. Or the retail piece for that. Maybe put, I mean, we all intend to use some brick, so. Thank you. You're welcome. Any other questions?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, for clarification at staff level and city attorney can help us on this. When it was discussed about uh, the two buildings would be constructed after, I believe it was, uh, before the forty ninth townhouse was given, was constructed. So to clarify that, are you saying that the two buildings would have to be under construction before the forty ninth and greater building permit would be issued? Is that the voluntary condition? Mr. Brown and Mayor Protem Bradley.
Well, yeah, that was, that was my question. Would they commit to that? Would they commit to that? Putting those buildings in place before we start issuing the second half of the, I don't know what second half is, eighty-seven divided by two, but forty-nine was a good number, but before the forty-ninth permit and and after were issued for townhomes, that that those two building, those two structures, the commercial and the restaurant would be under construction.
Again, okay, say it, Mr. Brown, I guess, if you clarify, that's the voluntary.
And we're willing to offer that, that condition. I've got another condition I want to offer. So.
Uh, I actually have two. One, I've read in the plan comments that wanted to, but I wanted to receive a verbal answer that HOA covenants going to include a restriction of no on the brick parking in all the streets around it and pathways. Sorry, I am checking. One of the sort of verbal answer that the HOA covenants are going to include a restriction of on the street parking anywhere in that area, pathways to ensure garbage truck and fire trucks have full access.
The answer to that question is yes. Hey, let me clarify. Holt Street will have, um, parking, there'll be parking spaces, we have a.
You didn't turn one off for the other. There you go.
I got that. But it'll be on the internal. I'm not, whole street, we are putting parking on and Second Street. For, uh, we're adding third, I think, thirty-one spaces, I believe, or something to that nature that will be on Second and and Holt. But internally, that is correct because of fire and garbage.
And the other one is that the HOA covenants include that the residents need to bring their garbage uh, recycling carts out to a pickup point on internal streets uh, and pathways to allow trucks to easily collect it.
That's correct.
Okay.
At the end of each driveway.
Wanted that verbally on the record.
Yes, sir.
Will all these conditions be in writing? Of course, a part of the motion, and how will we monitor that all this will be done?
If I'm not mistaken, I think they're in the plan. I think we already had it written in the plan. So, yes, ma'am. The HOA conditions are, we've got to actually affirmatively offer the condition that, uh, Councilman Bradley, uh, suggested the forty-nine. We're gonna offer that tonight with Lawson's help. And then we're also gonna offer a condition, Councilman White's, uh, request that we would have a brick facade on the retail building, both, both buildings. And I think what, uh, Mr. Allen's attempt was was saying is that if the pad, if a retail, excuse me, if a restaurant does not come within by the time we get to that forty-ninth condition, he would put up retail. Uh, so that, that would get you to the seventy-eight hundred square feet of retail, I think, is what, is. Uh, so that that would get you to the seventy eight hundred square feet of retail, I think, is what is in the.
Both buildings.
Both the both buildings. Yes, sir. That's exactly right. So so two conditions is what we're offering tonight. The construction of the retail and then the facade of the retail being brick.
I have a number of questions about the green space in the gazebo. I I just don't see how that flows from downtown. It's kind of blocked off by one of your buildings. I just don't see anyone from the public using that space. I don't, I just don't see. It's not inviting. It doesn't doesn't draw people in who are crossing the train tracks. You'll feel like they're in somebody's front yard or backyard or walking on. I I just I just don't see it. Can you help? Help me grasp.
You know, um, originally, when we were doing apartments, that was the dog park over there, if you recall. Um, with this design, we felt like putting um a grass open area there. Provided a space for not only these people here, but people not necessarily coming from downtown, but coming from Holt Street. Or coming from back of Holt Street. It isn't going to be inviting in that direction. Uh, as well as a segue, you know, you're going to have the parking over here. Uh, by the hot the church, which is at the bottom down there. That's their parking lot. So we felt like it was a particularly good place to put it.
Okay, I I don't agree. I mean, if you lost that one building and you made it a park going all the way from Washington to Hull. I could see that being a more compelling thoroughfare and public space, but it just seems kind of tucked in and hidden in a way. I just don't think people will use it.
I I understand what you're thinking, but I don't, where I disagree is, go ahead. Mr. Hill might be able to come up and answer that question because I think if 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 he can explain the site plan, our Councilman White, I think it'll help you understand. How from a crosswalk perspective, I think it's actually designed to to welcome people into that space, but I'm gonna let Mr. Hill just introduce yourself here.
Uh, my name is Alan Hill with Triad Design Group, forty eight oh seven Coker Boulevard, Greensboro. Um, what we were talking about as far as access to the park from the Washington Street area. Uh, it it's kind of hard for me to explain without a pointer, but there. The the retail site on the corner of Washington Street and Third Street, there's a a fairly good size. Uh, sidewalk. Yeah. So if you if you see coming down to the what would be the right hand side of that forty eight hundred square foot retail building. There's a there's about an eight foot sidewalk that comes off of Washington Street. And then when it gets to that curved area in the driveway, there's a crosswalk. Uh, a painted crosswalk that gets you to the sidewalk that would carry you to the open space. So there there is a good travel path from Washington Street, although it's not direct because, as you pointed out, the. Uh, the five unit building is sitting there right on West Washington Street, but uh, we do have. Uh, a good access from West Washington and, you know, perhaps some some, you know, little little bit of signage or something along that. Path would direct people to the park. Uh, the park does have frontage on Holt Street. Uh, with another sidewalk access off of Holt Street.
Well, I appreciate that. I I don't I don't agree. I think people will just go up the street. The interior street between those buildings and go straight up Washington. People are just, you know, if they're going to. The Dogwood Fester for whatever, they're just going to go straight up that street in between those buildings and the open space is not going to be used. Um. Would this open space be a named park with a Meven sign?
We did not anticipate putting a um. Uh. Making we would maintain it. The HOA would maintain it. So it would be just part of the of the project for the community. It wouldn't be named, but I'm happy to name it Ed Hooks Park if he needs it.
Definitely not. Okay, well, I I think I've asked my questions. You've answered them, but I I I just continue to feel like that space is not very compelling in any way.
I'm gonna fill it up, sir, and hopefully maybe staff can help bring up Google Maps, just so I make sure I understand if that's possible. Make sure I understand where this is, the the park. Is it behind the current? Standing Kingsdown Building and the Century Link Building? Is that correct? And I apologize if I set y'all up for failure. It's my fault.
So this is aerial imagery from GIS. Um, the bigger building that you see running South Worth Street. That's adjacent to that small jut out in blue is the Kingsdown Building that you referred to. And that would be the area um where the park is primarily located, where the gazebo would be.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Remind me, uh, did the uh, the the previous design have open space for the community?
I think you just slipped through it. It did, but most of it, if you recall, was a rooftop on on one of the buildings. Um, and it really was, it was, it was minimal, to be honest with you.
So this 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 technically, uh, this this design technically isn't it isn't removing any publicly accessible green space. Uh, it's actually adding.
It's adding more green space. Yes, sir.
But I just could not remember the previous plan was had.
That's correct.
The building on what Tim was just saying, um. Went back to the October twenty twenty two council meeting on YouTube. It was important to set aside room for downtown businesses. Forty two hundred square feet of public space was important. It was a need in downtown Meven. Developer wanted to be part of the solution and be part of the community and viewed as an asset. Do we have any square footage? For the community or for downtown businesses? I believe it's more or less for rent too, if I remember right.
Yes, we have space. Leasable space in the forty eight hundred square foot building, but. When we originally were talking to build a community building, we were trying to save the cotton building on the third in the second floor. Um. So at this point, there is not. Um. The open space in the gazebo, as I said, is open space for the community. Uh, as a whole. Uh, I'm unable to provide an office, but for the past three years, I've probably come here once a month. I've met with business owners downtown. I've spent a lot of time with them. I've been over these plans with them. Numerous times and talked with them. And the the plan we have today, I feel incorporates. What they're they we've asked, what we wanted to do and what they've asked for. Uh, I can't provide what I can't provide. Uh, so that's that's kind of where I am. However, I feel like the space that we have designed. Is very i- is is attractive and adds to the community. Um. You know, we tie in from Second Street all the way over. So I do understand, uh, Mr. White, your your thoughts, but I really feel like. Um. We've made a really strong approach now. You know, I I don't know how other ways to do it other than. You know, take the buildings and move them all the way back and move the green space up to the front, but not have another road. Um, so I'm trying to be. You know, it's in the design, we have to take life safety in into account, and that's where we that's where we are.
I understand, and I appreciate your comments on the top building. I wish you all had done more homework prior to twenty twenty two on that one, but I.
Sure.
Sounds like you have a real challenge on your hand with that building. I think it's a crying shame.
It is.
But it it may be reality. Um, you know, if if I had to just pick what I wanted, and since we're just having an open discussion here. I'd remove the that five um unit building on Washington Street and make a larger gazebo with picnic tables. So people could sit outside and make that green space go all the way through. So it really is a natural funnel from Washington to Hull. Then I'll I'll stop parking on that. That I think would be compelling.
All right, any other questions? Anything else?
That's it.
All right, it is a public hearing. If anybody'd like to speak, come forward, state your name and your address.
Good evening, Mary McCarlin, three oh seven North Wilbur Road. Couple of things. Third Street is a really busy street. And I'm looking at this drawing, this rendition. And the buildings that are on the left hand side of the street seem like they are on top of the street. And the buildings to the right of the street seem to have a more reasonable distance from their front door to the road. Um. That's just too close. I think I don't know what our requirements are, but that seems excessively close. The houses, the buildings on the left hand side of Third Street. Are really close to the street, much closer than on the right hand side. And why don't you have a dog park? People who own homes, I mean, it's one thing when you rent an apartment, you're not allowed to have a dog. But someone's gonna spend this kind of money for something to own. They won't have a dog. I mean, they won't have a dog. Sometimes more. And personally, Carl will attest to this, and so will the city workers who take care of our beautiful dog park and our community park. It's busy. We don't need eighty more dogs using our dog park. I mean, yes, it's open and available, but I think your community open space should have a dog park. Another point, Holt Street and Third Street. I think there should be a stoplight there. You're going to have so much traffic coming onto Holt Street, three exits out of this development. And the majority of them are either going to be going down to get on one, go towards one nineteen, or they could go Holt Street and go that concluded way to get out to one nineteen. But I think that for safety purposes, a highlighted crosswalk is not enough. There should be a stoplight and it should be a controlled four way walkway. I meant one more thing. Um. Now, this is just my ignorance. Will there be sprinkler systems in these three story buildings? Is is there a sprinkler system in these apartments? Can anybody answer that question? Is that standard construction? Should be for fire purposes.
Cliff, you know, whether the code requires it on three story, I think it does, and I'm not sure.
Especially with cars parked underneath. It is residential.
I'm not sure about the three stories, but usually typically is a single family home. Which will fall into a single family residential code book. Which the only time I know of a sprinkler system that would be required is if you wanted to drop that. Rated wall between the two residents from two hours to one. But I can double check on that three.
No, you're you're right. Single family, uh, single family dwellings, the state building code actually prohibits local government from requiring. In single family residence. That it's not multifamily.
But they're they're connected by a wall. They share walls, but the walls in between each unit will control. Okay. So. On this development, we're thinking young people or retired people and people with their um electric vehicles. Are these things going to be wired and ready to go with that? You know, you know, the plug ins. I mean, I know that's, is that something that's in the plans? That's all I have to say.
I was gonna address our. I think you did already.
Yeah. Anybody else? Oh, okay.
So the walls that separate the units are two hour uh structurally independent walls that. Keep fire from either side from getting into the units. It goes from the foundation to the underside of the roof deck, so it's completely sealed. And that's 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 coding good.
I'd like to make one more comment. Thank God I had my architect here and my engineer and attorney and whoever the hell else needs to be here. But we had a conversation. I'm not sure if this would help you, but taking that building on the corner up on the right. If I lose one unit, I turn it ninety degrees. Um, and line it up with the other units. Below, does that make sense? And thus bring in that green space all the way up to Washington Street. Behind it. Does that make sense?
I understand what you're describing.
And we're we're open to doing, having that and doing that. Um. That's one way to get that done, I think.
Good. Anybody else?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Gene Jester. We live at two oh nine West Holt Street. Right on the corner of Second and Hope and the Old Yellow House. Uh, three years ago, I spoke at the planning meeting. And if I remember correctly, the planning commissions on the earlier project. And the planning commission voted something like eight to one against the project. And then went to the council. And the planning commission was basically ignored. I did not make it to the planning commission's presentation last week. Because my wife has been in the hospital very seriously ill for the last couple of weeks, but. I wanted to speak and ask a few questions tonight. Uh, we've lived at Holt Street for thirty three years on that corner. And seen. The mattress company come and go or not come. I wasn't there that long. But our old house was built by somebody that was part of the founding. Uh, the mattress company. I have a, I've had two occupations in my life. Uh, I was a minister for many years. And I've worked in investments for the last thirty years. And last time I was here, hoping that prayer would work. Uh, this time. I like this plan much better than I liked the other. I do have a few questions, though, as I understand from David presented some numbers to us back at the Methodist Church in a preliminary meeting. And it was that the cost of the units would be approximately six hundred thousand dollars. Or if I do my math correctly, and that's what I do every day in my business, that's over three hundred dollars a square foot. When I look at statistics for the average price of a residence in Meven, it's around three fifty right now. And there are very few houses. That are twice the square footage as this. Uh, that are now occupied by new buyers. I think the forty two million dollar projection of the cost. Of the construction. Is probably a pre parif estimate. And I think that certainly brings a note of uncertainty one more time to this argument. I have a hard time thinking. That people are going to pay six hundred thousand dollars in Meven for two thousand dollar, I mean, two thousand square foot residences. I also believe that the uncertainty of the current economic situation. Leaves us in quagmire about mortgage financing. Nobody wants to undertake a mortgage now. And I think that the developer, the builder will have some considerations that they have to figure. will have some considerations that they have to figure out before these units. This time last year, everybody thought interest rates would be lower by now. Guess what? They are not. And we weren't even thinking this time last year about tariffs. Tariffs are taxes. Taxes on each one of us and ta- taxes on people who build the buildings. I am concerned about the fact that on Holt Street, I have longed for that. The beautiful old library that there, I have longed for something on the lot in front of our house that would be undertaken by the city and that would provide recreation and free space. And yes, even more pickleball courts if we needed them. I do find there being this time lots of financial questions about this. I think a forty-two million dollar projection is low. I think six hundred thousand dollars per unit is high. That might help my own property, but I don't want to be chased out of town. So I think there are some real considerations about whether or not financially we'll be back here in a year or two looking to see, hey, what's happened? And why are things held up? I think it takes a lot of fortitude on the parts of the council to sometimes stand in the way of lots of new tax revenue. But my goodness, y'all have done a great job. There's tax revenue exploding all over this community. And you have done a great job with parks and recreation. And there's probably need for even more. I just think that our builders, our developers have to be, I know they're going to be considering all these things. I have seen project after project fall through from clients that I have had and that our company has had. And I'm not saying that David and his group don't have a magic wand with all this. But it must be a wand that's been added since October of twenty-two. I, I hope that if the project is approved, that it, I don't know how the street on Holt Street, for instance, or on Second Street is going to be widened. But there's going to be some parking right there. It's not going to be, uh, it's a lot of units regardless. But I think the big kicker for me is you're going to have to sell eighty-seven units at six hundred thousand dollars, and that's with current projections. And I find that pretty hard to believe that's going to happen. This is not like you Second Street and Hope. It's a wonderful old house, and I hope it keeps appreciating. But it's not Fifth Street, and it's not over by the lake. It is not a draw for many houses in that price range. The developer has to make money. If he's going to have to pay forty-two million dollars for it, that's a price that he's going to have to save. But business-wise this time, and not just the tradition of, of keeping the historic nature. It's ugly right now. Something needs to be done with it. But there's plenty of tax revenues coming from other sources that could do something with it. And I hope you'll bear all of that in consideration.
Thanks, Sarah. Next.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Mike Baptiste. I live at five eighteen Collington Drive in Meven. Um, I've been a resident in Meven for thirty years and a downtown business owner for fifteen. And firsthand how downtown Meven, how far, um, downtown Meven has come and how far it still needs to go. The Meven Downtown Vision Plan was a great first step in trying to lay out the long-term future for downtown. This proposed project completely ignores this vision. Building aesthetics are more like an army barracks than the proposed building designs the vision plan contained. Aesthetics that were in line with the existing downtown buildings. The vision plan proposed townhomes on the north side of town, not the south side, and even then, the townhomes were mixed with street-level retail. The Kingsdown property was seen as a mixed-use centerpiece with public parking, commercial and recreational space, and high-density residential. This project ignores all of that for what seems to be profit motives. Investors are not going to be invested in our city or downtown once these are done. They're looking to make a maximum profit with six hundred and fifty thousand dollar townhomes. They couldn't even be bothered to mock up what tiny amount of remaining commercial space is included in the plan. It's just grass. We have no idea what those buildings will even look like. We've seen the amount of retail space reduced every time it comes up now down to forty-eight hundred and three thousand for a supposed restaurant. The vision plan called for over thirty thousand square feet in this of commercial space on this parcel. The vaguely proposed future restaurant will only have usable parking five days a week because of the lease agreement with the Methodist Church. We're going to have to, we're going to give each townhome four spaces of private parking on prime downtown property while providing no permanent public parking to downtown. They're going to tear down the cotton building because reducing it will reduce their profit. Meven has seen so many amazing, successful projects that renovated entire distressed properties. The vision plan proposed open public space and even a small sound, soundstage for events. Instead, this group is paying a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars to avoid having the required amount of public space so they can build more townhomes. This group can't even be bothered to renovate a small historical building, and there's nothing about this proposal that is charming. The Kingsdown parcel is a generational opportunity to dramatically increase downtown residency and provide desperately needed street-level commercial space in recent era construction. As a downtown business owner, I know firsthand how much high-density development can help strengthen downtown businesses. This proposed project is not in harmony with the surrounding area and is a mockery of the downtown vision plan. It does not support downtown's culture or aesthetics and provides a fraction of the residential and commercial density of the other proposals and the vision plan. These townhomes could be built anywhere in the city of Meven. I would ask this council reject this proposal and make clear that any project on this parcel needs to be an investment in our city's downtown alongside a return for investors and a true long-term partnership. Thank you for your.
Thank you, Mike. Next.
Alana Coombs, two oh five South Fourth Street.
Fix our mic, please.
Is that better? Yeah. Okay, uh, this week is National Farmers Week, as you know, and I think that means that it's a good time to think about how we can help our farmers market. What they've said for a long time is that they need a covered market, and this project provides a great opportunity to do just that. The cotton building could be an iconic venue. And it could be something that would benefit the market greatly because of its visibility from center street. And as you probably know, markets that are visible get great trade that are passing through. Now, you may ask, but wasn't it declared unviable? Well, there's an important contradiction here. In October twenty-two, the developer reported to council, and I quote, "The cotton building is in great shape. The flooring decking in great shape." The minutes note, they had summit engineering come in to do a structural assessment, and they determined there were no issues with the cotton building. It is in great shape. If you watch the recording, you'll hear them then go on to say about how it was built at a time when buildings were built to last and that all it needs is a new roof. Given these contradictory assessments, I think there is a need for a third condition. And that is that an independent assessment is carried out that find prohibitively expensive to salvage the building. I'm pro-density, and like you, Mayor, I'm pro-smart growth and not simply pro-growth. With, with continued jobs growth locally, we can expect continued developer interest and housing demand. To demolish the cotton building goes against council policy to protect its historic buildings and against the aspirations of the downtown plan. The protection of Meds historic assets is important because it supports the long-term of the city. As an assistant professor of planning, I know this question very Developers never like pauses, and they'll always say that, uh, it'll throw the, any delay will throw the project in doubt. But if we assume they respect our history, then they'll see the need for a pause for an independent assessment. And I'm sure as good businessmen, they've, they'll have built in some sort of time cushion. The farmer's market doesn't need a fancy building attached. All it needs is a new roof and some paint and maybe some benches and tables. To me, the decision on the cotton building is the tipping point where smart growth just becomes growth. Agreeing to a demolition is the point where we stop asking, how can we build while protecting our long-term economic prosperity? And we just build. This could be a real opportunity for the farmer's market, so let's get an independent assessment of the cotton building and protect the long-term vitality of the farmer's market and our downtown economy. Thank you.
Would you, uh, state your name and address, please?
Alana Coombs, two oh five South Fourth Street.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Next.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilman, for taking time to listen to us. Uh, my name is Paul Palumbo, sixty-five eighteen Lebanon Road. I'm here concerned the sixty-six hundred Lebanon Road project.
This is not the time that we're talking about the development on, uh, the Keystone Project. We don't leave public comments now on that. Okay, that's not the issue that we're discussing now.
When do, do I not get a voice on anything?
It will be continued in, um, September. We'll see you in September, okay?
Well, I don't understand how local politics work. I'm a small businessman.
Okay.
Uh, I went to meeting last Monday night. All the neighbors were against rezoning. The planning board sounded like they were.
You talking about the sixty-six hundred?
Yes.
Yeah, that's not the issue now. We will, we would love to.
I don't understand how we're continuing when everybody was against it a hundred percent.
This is a completely.
Thank you for your time. I'm sorry. I'm out of order.
Thank you.
Next.
Doug Carroll, Haller Ridge Lane. Uh, something needs to be done with that property. It's Kingsdown. It's been torn down. And Kingsdown, that building was probably built. It was probably ten different buildings that just kept being added to it over the years, and that's, they weren't going to be able to do anything to that building. That was, but it's kind of an eyesore now, and I hope the ones that have spoken before may have got some good ideas about maybe they're being, they cost too much for folks in Meven to pay six hundred thousand dollars for a townhouse, but my, my whole concern about the thing is, is Third Street and Hope Street. With those buildings being as close on that corner, not the corner with the parking lot and not the corner that's grassed in, but that is, that's a hot corner right there. And if it, if it's not with crosswalks and probably a stoplight there, you're probably going to have a lot of wrecks, but that's, that's my biggest concern.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Jim Shaw, Longleaf Pine Place in Meven. Uh, prior to living at Longleaf Pine Place, for sixty-some years, I lived on Holt Street. Matter of fact, just to give you context, my, my family lived on Holt Street for over a hundred years. It would probably surprise you to know that as many, as, as early as eighty years ago, there were cows on Holt Street, and it was legal. It was, it was permitted. Um, the, the, the main theme that I have, the, the word that comes up that I've heard in, uh, other considerations is harmony. To me, this development is not in harmony with the neighborhood. If you walk down Second Street, Third Street, Holt Street, Jackson Street, you see homes that were built in the thirties, the forties, the fifties. This is not that. This is something totally different. It, to me, it doesn't look positively charming. Like we say, the optics just aren't there for me. So, you know, I just want to make that point. Um, I know the developer has to do something with this. I know they want to make their money back. And I don't have an answer. But I just don't know that this is, this is the right fit for what we need there on that property. Uh, it's a shame that Kingsdown had to go, but it did have to go. And this is where we are today. So thank you for your time. Appreciate your consideration. Just look at the optics of it. Look at how it fits. What would you think as a visitor, if you were riding down Center Street, looking at that panorama? Or on M-Track, riding through town, looking at that panorama of the city? Would it match? Would it fit? And just yesterday, I rode around some other apartment places. Now, these are town, townhomes, I know, but some other three-story units. Man, they just, they just don't fit in that location. Three stories, that's a big unit. So that's what I'll leave you with. Thank you for my time.
Good. Thank you, Jim. Next.
Tim Slazik, uh, six oh nine South Fourth Street. Uh, I have probably not a, more of a question and an observation here. Draw your attention to the commercial spaces, the restaurant pad and the retail. First off, I don't see any parking accommodation on this plan or any of that. I don't know if the, uh, developer might address that. Secondly, and maybe the board, uh, council needs to consider this. As far as the restaurant pad, do we need to put a restriction on drive-through? That's already a busy intersection. Um, yeah, we don't know what's going there. And we've had that issue come up before. So I just wanted to make those comments, ask those questions.
Thank you. Anyone else?
All right. I need a motion.
All right. Move we close public hearing.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our motion carries to close the public hearing. Uh, if developer like to say something, or any questions from the council?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make sure we've got the three conditions. Uh, well, there are two conditions we've discussed. I want to offer a third condition, uh, to, to council. We discussed the forty-nine unit condition. I think Lawson, I don't know what we need to do formally to make that condition a part of our application, but.
It's, uh, it's my understanding, and I think the council's understanding that required to, uh, I mean, building permit being issued for the forty-ninth townhouse that you will, your client will have constructed, uh, the, uh, buildings.
Yeah, that, that's how we understand that.
Commercial buildings.
Mr. Mitchell?
Just to clarify for staff. Did you say construct it or under construction?
I said constructed, so would that be appropriate?
Uh, I think we, maybe under construction, maybe the.
That's what was offered previously.
I think under construction, I think is the condition.
Thank you for that clarification.
Mr. Mitchell. Um, the second condition is that we're, that we're prepared to offer is on both the restaurant building and the retail building that we would have a brick facade. Uh, and.
Full size.
On, yes, and, uh, and then of course, um, try to preserve as much of the cotton building's brick. Uh, and in talking to the client, the timbers that are in the, 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 the support timbers that are in uh, the cotton building to try to preserve as much of that as, as feasible. So that's the second condition. Lawson, is that enough detail?
Yes, sir.
Great. Um, uh, the third condition, and in response to some, some great conversation tonight about access to the open space in the gazebo, we would, um, like to add the condition that we will remove one unit on the northeast corner building and either. And either pivot the building. I guess it'd be ninety degrees. Uh. Uh to the. So that the 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 buildings facing the retail and open up the space. Between Washington and the open space in the gazebo as as on as shown on the site plan. So that um that becomes a much more welcoming space uh than it is as it's currently. Um designed and I. I know that was a long condition, Mr. Brown, but uh I hope the the intent of the condition was clear.
Any any further questions?
I I have no questions about that, but I want to make sure council is comfortable with that last condition.
All right, uh it's been a long day. Let's take a ten minute break. Please no discussion amongst the council and we could be back here in ten minutes.
Right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah. The mayor before me, I think, voted three times in thirty five years, and I've been on it six years. It'd be my first vote. Um. I, you know, it it was funny, um not funny, when we had the apartment complex. Uh I I touted it pretty much as a probably the greatest economic development that could have happened to downtown. And um it was met particularly with downtown uh folks, you know, very, very uh. Uh happy that uh this is this is uh this apartment thing was coming. Um. This is this is a a less dense uh project. Uh I know they're expensive, but townhomes at Keystone are going from five fifty on up, so. Uh they and we believe in walk, you know, we've talked about walkability and access to downtown. Uh I think it's um it's it this adds a lot to the downtown area. Um, you know, when you talk about harmony, you're talking about house to house and this by law. Townhomes are a home or house. So if you were, if you're talking about the legality of of harmony, I'm not sure it's there. But um I am going to vote in the affirmative uh for this project, so I'm gonna uh I'm gonna vote no. What I do, I vote yes.
No, you vote no to the.
I vote no to the motion. So the motion dies. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I think the engineer had a comment maybe worth adding.
Before we get another motion. Where's the engineer?
Mr. Mayor and Council, one of the uh conditions that we we proposed, which was. Uh the third condition regarding rotating. The five units, dropping a unit, rotating. Uh the five units in that um in that northeast corner. After looking at it and discussing it, if we if we rotate that, the only thing that's going to do is. Throw the parking around where the building is currently, which kind of defeats the whole purpose of that. Uh I think in in conversation, really, the better thing to do is to leave the buildings. Facing the direction they are, either keep. Four units up close to the drive or slide the four units over to create about forty feet of of. Visibility or open space. Between the building and the property line up against West Washington Street. So it would it would create. A a little more openness back to uh that open space in gazebo. So uh I I just don't think rotating and losing a building is going to gain us anything.
Well, we're gonna lose something.
We're gonna lose a unit. Lose a unit and and keep them facing in the same direction. So that'll give us versus twenty feet of open space on the end. It'll give us forty feet and and open it up a little more to West Washington.
So so you're talking you would delete or drop the unit that's on the east side of that drawing?
Correct.
The right hand side?
Correct.
Okay, and that's the condition? Okay.
That being part of the vote.
Right.
Ben Williams.
Right.
And and that vote was uh to not approve the uh development and it failed. So the logical. Um answer is there will now be a motion the other way if this council so chooses, which I think there will.
With the modified condition, Mr. Brown.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. What's the pleasure to council now?
Well, I I agree with Councilman White's uh opening comments on his motion. Um. This is really tough decision. I see I see that there's three options. One is to uh. One is to uh not approve it, in which case it's already approved for the. Um. Three story, four story apartments um. And from what we heard, that's also going to include a comeback on the. Cotton exchange. The other option is in not approving it is it may remain a laid out grass field. I I agree wholeheartedly with a couple of comments about the harmony. It's very difficult to imagine. How you can make harmony between uh downtown. Uh an old downtown and then old residents, and this is sandwiched in between, but. I would I would say that this this is no less ominous. And then the apartment complex design has already approved and stands approved and would be able to be built as it is now. I like the uh uh as Jonathan said, I like the fact that there's a fewer density. I know that may be upsetting to uh some of the downtown businesses because of the loss of of revenue from. Patrons, but uh then on the other side of the development, literally, it's probably a benefit to the. The existing homeowners. It also is a reduction in traffic, which has been a concern. Uh so having given at it, as as I said, I agree it's a very difficult decision, but I make a. I would make a motion to approve the uh V one C D. Rezoning is presented uh with the conditions that have been presented, the three conditions that are assumed by staff that. Are solidly documented. Uh and find the uh motion to find that the application is consistent. With the objectives and goals in our two thousand seventeen comprehensive land development plan by design. Uh it's within property for the G one downtown mixed growth area encourages a variety of uses in downtown and promotes. A village concept of people walking a walkable environment consistent with growth, our growth management goal one point one supports. Uh this historic downtown Medmen's culture by addressing aesthetic walkability. Walkability, eventually providing shopping, dining and housing options and. Provides pedestrian facilities. Um as well as some open space for recreation for the community, not just system. And provides a mix of commercial and residential use is consistent with the Medmen Downtown Vision Plan.
All right, we got a motion. Do we have a second?
Thank you.
We have a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Um it's two two. And I vote in affirmative affirmative uh but yes, so motion carries. Thank you. All right, moving on to the annexation agreement with K Y S Holdings LLC, Fitch Street. Uh parcel sixteen fifty one thirty three, Mr. Brown.
Uh first mayor, would you vote to bring this Burkholder back if that is your council's wishes, please?
I make a motion to reinstall, whatever the right word is, Councilwoman Burkholder to the council.
Second. Thank you. Made a motion, a second to bring this Burkholder back. Uh any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
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 She's back. Thank you, Jonathan. We have a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Um it's two two. And I vote in affirmative affirmative uh but yes, so motion carries. Thank you. All right, moving on to the annexation agreement with K Y S Holdings LLC, Fitch Street. Uh parcel sixteen fifty one thirty three, Mr. Brown.
Uh first mayor, would you vote to bring this Burkholder back if that is your council's wishes, please?
I make a motion to reinstall, whatever the right word is, Councilwoman Burkholder to the council.
Second. Thank you. Made a motion, a second to bring this Burkholder back. Uh any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
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 She's back. Thank you, Jonathan.
Uh mayor, members of the council, this is a request by K Y S Holdings. Owner of a point two acre lot on Fitch uh Street in Alamance County. Uh tax map identifying number in your packet. And they have requested annexation. From a staff perspective, we determined it would not be appropriate. Uh at this point to bring them into the city, limit this property into the city limits.
then on the other side of the development, literally, it's probably, uh, a benefit to the, the, uh, existing homeowners. It also is a reduction in traffic, which has been a concern. Uh, so, having given at it, as, as I said, I agree it's a very difficult decision, but I make, I would make a motion to approve the, uh, V-one C D three zoning is presented, uh, with the conditions that have been presented, the three conditions that are, uh, assumed by staff that are solidly documented. Uh, and find the, uh, motion to find that the application is consistent with the objectives and goals in our two thousand seventeen comprehensive land development plan by design. Uh, it's within property for the G-one downtown mixed-growth area, encourages a variety of uses in downtown and promotes a village concept of people walking, a walkable environment, consistent with growth, our growth management goal one point one. Supports, uh, this, uh, historic downtown Mabon's culture by addressing aesthetic walkability, walkability, eventually providing shopping, dining and housing options and provides pedestrian facilities, um, as well as some open space for recreation for the community, not just system. And provides a mix of commercial and residential use that's consistent with the Mabon downtown B plan.
All right, we got a motion. Do we have a second?
Thank you.
We have a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Um, it's two-two. And I vote in affirmative, affirmative, uh, but yes, so motion carries. Thank you. All right, moving on to the annexation agreement with K Y S Holdings LLC, Fitch Street, uh, parcel sixteen fifty-one thirty-three. Mr. Brown?
Uh, First Mayor, would you vote to bring Ms. Burkholder back if that is your council's wishes, please?
I make a motion to reinstall, whatever the right word is, Councilwoman Burkholder to the council.
Second. Uh, thank you. Made a motion in second to bring this Burkholder back. Uh, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
She's back. Thank you, Johnson.
Uh, Mayor, members of the council, this is a request by K Y S Holdings, owner of a point-two-acre lot on Fitch, uh, Street in Alamance County, uh, tax map identifying number in your packet. And they have requested annexation. From a staff perspective, we determined it, it would not be appropriate, uh, at this point to bring them into the city, limit this property into the city limits. The, uh, consistent with the June sixth, twenty twenty-two policy, uh, the applicant has, uh, signed the standard annexation agreement that in the event that staff determines in the future and the council so wishes, this property can be annexed. This is consistent with the, uh, policy of twenty twenty-two and is consistent with what we've done in the past. This is in the historic West End District where fewer than, uh, fifty percent of the immediate neighborhood uh, has, uh, previously requested annexation. Staff's recommendation that you approve this agreement.
I move the city accept, uh, the petition for annexation and the annexation agreement for the plus or minus point-two acres on this Fitch Street, but defer annexation until the future per the city's policy and upon rec, uh, recording of the signed annexation agreement, I further move that city allow access to the city utility services for the voluntary annexation.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Still quick one, Mr. Brown. I guess what percentage are we up to right now in this area-ish?
I would have to defer to, uh, staff as to what that percentage is.
So, uh, in this case, we don't have an answer on the percentage, but of an equal measure, it's about the ability to provide, uh, full services. So, in this case, we don't have water in this neighborhood. Orange Alamance Water System does, so that's a factor in annexation as well. So, but we can, this has been since twenty twenty-two. If I had to speculate, it's a small percentage.
Still small, okay.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, want to let everybody know, we still have relocated, uh, from our city hall for city meetings. Uh, we'll be at the MAC again in September. Uh, just to let everybody know. City office will be closed on Monday, September first, in service to Labor Day. Uh, city council meeting is going to be on the eighth of, um, September, and we'll be here. That's it. Reminder, there's a lot of stuff going on in the city of Mabon, particularly downtown this fall and this, this, uh, winter, so, uh, uh, let's support them. Uh, if there's nothing else, the meeting is adjourned.